I'm scrolling to the top of the document.
Kind of weird game is playing over there.
I was scrolling to the top of the agenda, it's a huge packet.
Oh yeah.
388 pages.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's against the rules of your tight ship thing.
Exactly.
It's bad when I'm telling you tight ship.
No.
I've got 1,900.
Yes, I do too. Alright, it's now 7:00 PM Central Time. It's 5 o'clock somewhere, but not in Gardner. I'm going to call Gardner City Council to order. Please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a, we're gonna start this meeting this evening with a presentation. And for the presentation, I do call up members of the Gardner Parks and Rec Department, and as well as our event planner, all of our folks here. I'm moving away from the mic here for a second. So, last, two weeks ago, our Parks and Rec staff went out here, and the reason why is because they were receiving the Kansas Recreation Park Association Innovative Recreation Program Award for the Smoke on the Trails Event and the accompanying Grand Slam Beer and Wine Festival. It's the first year of the program, and needless to say, it was an amazing breathtaking success. We had so much demand for spots within the barbecue competition, they completely sold out the 70 that were available. Then, we had so much demand for tickets that we actually opened up an additional round of ticketing, and we sold out of all of those tickets. And, from what I understand, from the vendors, to the attendees, to the folks who came in from other cities just to kind of watch what was going on, to, I believe, the barbecue judges also had just almost unanimous, unanimous reviews as to what was going on. And kudos to the entire team here. Renee, our event planner, and Matt, and Jason, and Adriana, and Jake, I'm sorry Jake. And thank you again for all your help and for that tremendous event that we had. And grateful city, thanks you, thank you very much. (Applause) It takes a lot to bring one of those types of events together, and I know that Parks and Rec couldn't do it without assistance from, you know, the folks at Public Works, Utilities, who helped to put in the pedestals for the, for the part, you know, for the booths. And then also, obviously, the assistance of law enforcement to keep the order and to keep the traffic flowing, and so thank you also to Jim Purdy for that piece of work. Alright, public comments. Members of the public are now welcome to use this time to make any comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not of a part of a public hearing. And we do not have a public hearing this evening, so I'm going to open the floor for public comments. If there is an individual in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on an item that's on the agenda or even not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and have your hearing. With no one coming forward, or ordered, with no one coming forward, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there any council member who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Winters, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in your favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes. Committee recommendations. Committee recommendation, item number one, consider authorizing the city administrator to accept, to execute a contract for the Inflow and Infiltration Study and Analysis Project, project number WW1706. Gons, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The monitor is not, the monitor is not working, I have to put my surface here. On January 4th this year, the Utility Advisory Commission approved a recommendation to the city to authorize the city administrator to execute a contract with TREC Design Group in the amount of not to exceed 4,332,943 for the Inflow and Infiltration, also known as INI, study and analysis. INI issues are new, are not new for, to the city. They were first recommended, recommended in the 2009 Master Plan, wastewater master plan. And then last year, HDR Engineering performed a updated master plan, and they're also recommending for the city of Gardner to adapt and implement an Inflow and Infiltration Program. Issue related to the, issues discussed in the master plan were to deal with excessive flow within the wastewater collection system and the treatment of those flows in Kill Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility. We have estimated that on a daily basis, we have about more than half a million gallons of INI. That's half a million gallons, which is equivalent to about $484,000 a year. That means that we spend that amount of money treating basically groundwater or rainwater. Over the past two years, we've done some efforts to identify these problems, but we need to have a more systematic approach to the problem. In order to demo, illustrate what INI is all about, and to give more information to the public, we have put together a PowerPoint presentation. Jeff Lemire, he's the Senior Staff Engineer for Utilities, and he'll be doing the presentation.
Thanks, Gons. As he said, I'll be giving a presentation here to discuss what INI is, and the goals of the program, and how these goals will be accomplished, as well as the project team and experience that TREC Design Group will bring to the table. A little history before you on INI. In the early 70s, the EPA actually funded projects throughout the United States for communities, and with the costs associated with INI, that is no longer an option because of the many communities that are more reactive instead of proactive in dealing with their maintenance of their sewer systems. Therefore, what is INI? Inflow is the misdirected rainwater to sanitary sewer systems from the storm system. Infiltration is the groundwater that infiltrates into the sewer lines through cracks and other holes in our system. Therefore, what is, therefore, those two things together, INI increases the flows being conveyed to and treated at our wastewater treatment plant. This leads to higher sewer rates, higher operation and maintenance costs, and shortens the useful life of our equipment within our system. So the goal of our INI program is to reduce O&amp;M costs, extend the useful life of our existing system, improve capacity, and postpone and/or eliminate unnecessary CIP projects that were proposed in our wastewater master plan. With an INI program in place, we look to drastically reduce the approximately 522,000 gallons a day of INI being treated at the wastewater treatment plant. With collaboration with city staff and TREC, these goals should be attainable in the near How do we accomplish these goals? Well, one, we need to collect the existing flow data in our system and review that data, which will indicate what truly is our INI, and the location of those issues. This analysis will then help us eliminate projects from the CIP or produce different projects for the CIP and plan accordingly in the future. This analysis will also include a review of our maintenance history to indicate areas of largest concern and show us where the low hanging fruit is in our system that we can accomplish quickly. Once the flow data is acquired, an INI reduction program can then be outlined to create a systematic approach to inspections and testing that will be needed to make the program work. Manhole, manhole and sewer line inspection will occur, as well as NASCO training for city staff provided by TREC. Smoke testing and CCTV inspection and rating will occur on all of the master plan projected projects, and existing sewer model data can then be updated based on those numbers. Once these items have been performed, rehabilitation design and projects can then be put forward and implemented across the system. Why go through this process? Because Gardner spends approximately $484,000 a year, as Gons stated, on treating INI. Based on TREC's experience, Gardner could cut that cost by 40 to 60 percent, which will reduce flows within the system, reduce O&amp;M, treatment, future construction costs, pumping, and provide additional capacity at the wastewater treatment plant for future growth in our community. This program will review flow data and existing capacities to provide project planning based on that data and projected growth in the community. A current TREC contract reviewed the White Drive Replacement Project that was outlined in the wastewater master plan, and this project was deemed unwarranted based on the data of the flow monitoring that occurred late August, which also occurred that, during that large rain event that happened at that time. So after reviewing that data and looking at the projected CIP, the projects that are listed for $12 million worth of relief lines in the wastewater master plan, we are projecting that we can postpone and eliminate multiple projects from that list based on those findings at White Drive. While we save money in treatment, we also need to spend some money on maintenance. As you can see, the picture is provided on the slide, there's a lot of issues, and these pictures have been brought to you by the CCTV inspection that the line maintenance group has been performing with the purchase of the CCTV camera and trailer last year. As you can see, these inspections have produced large amount of issues from roots that are on the lower left, to grease on the upper left, to some more roots in the middle, and then INI, inflow occurring on the upper right through break, broken pipe, and then also a manhole with a lid that actually has holes built in it. With the NASCO training that will be provided to us by TREC, we can then perform uniform inspection processes that will be tied into the city's Lucidity Program for tracking and collection of data. Now getting into the contract itself and the details in which TREC has provided the following costs. Now, as you can see, the total is $432,000, but Task 1 through Task 3 are the study, analysis, and create, creation of the actual program. While Task 4 will be dictated by the findings and conditions of the existing system based on those inspections. After reviewing the contract and reviewing other communities' INI programs within the Kansas City metro area, and TREC's experience as a leader in INI program, staff recommends approval of this contract. Too far. Any questions? I also have Lucas Gillian with TREC Group as the Team Project Manager, who will be helping us with this program.
Alright, great, thanks Jeff, thanks Gons, hold where you're at, because we're gonna open this up for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to make a comment on committee recommendation, item number one, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and be heard. Everybody wants to talk about infiltration of sewer lines. With no one coming forward, questions, comments from the dais, starting with Rich.
Yeah, real quick, I know one of the big issues for infiltration is obviously for that, we're on a gravity feed system except for when we get to the pumps. How could we possibly stop water infiltration when the water table is so high here, where, you know, the sewer lines are going downhill, so I guess that's where I'm kind of wondering how we plan to stop that, because I just, that's where I'm kind of lost. I mean, I put in a lot of sewer pipe when I was a young man, so I, you know, if the water table's high and you're down below it, then it's the path of least resistance.
That is correct. A lot of it is just maintenance of the system, and the age of the system.
Okay.
So, some pipelining and those kind of tools will help us eliminate a lot of that from occurring.
Alright. Question?
Yes. So, is there a timeframe then that they might do the stud, repeat the study, like as we grow, and 10 years, 15 years down the line, is it recommended to repeat it?
What we have projected out here is a program that will probably take us between seven to eight years, and as we go through the program, we'll then have to review it and determine at that time if it is reasonable to redo a study, based on how far we've gotten through the system and what those costs are. But then also the growth of the community will also kind of help that, but those areas are newer, so those should be better constructed areas and not have as much inflow, but that will be part of the, also part of the private INI program, where we'll have to look and make sure that through the inspection process of new home builds, that there's not illicit connections.
Anything?
Yeah.
Okay, Council President?
How do we know exactly what our flow rate is? What do we, how does that work? How do you measure it?
There are flow meters at the wastewater treatment plant.
And, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, how do we know what's, what's normal versus what's INI? Such that we can, we can make a statement like, we'll save, will we spend $480,000, $484,000 a year? How do we measure that and get, and come up with that number?
There's multiple ways to perform that calculation. Some of that, you can just take a basic, simple approach, as in, these are the flows for the year, divided by 365, and that's your average. And then if you go into the, into the EPA regulations, you can go in there and calculate it using different calculations, based on what your dry weather flows are. You would look at a period of time during the year where you have seven to 14 days of dry weather, and you can see that those flows in our system are anywhere from 1.2 million to 1.3 million. So that would be our, what our dry weather flow is, but our average day flow for the whole year is up over 1.8 million. And then when we have a rain event, you can see that the flow data at the plant jumps up anywhere to three to four million. And after a half inch of rain, it takes the treatment plant two to three days to go back down to the 1.3 area, and after a one to one and a half inch rain event, it takes four to five days for that flow to go back down to that area.
So, so the study will, will consist of more of the same of what our Public Works guys have been doing, or our Utility guys have been doing so far with, with cameras and things like that?
Yes. TREC will provide NASCO training, that's the national recognized way to inspect sewer lines, manholes, so that it's not more, it's not on a personal experience basis, but on a uniform analysis, and that will rate the system and where we should go in the system to make repairs.
So I guess you'll come up with a list of breakages and known issues, and then you'll just prioritize and go down the list?
Correct, and that rating system will help that.
And that should cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars total for the, once, for the, both the study and the fixing?
To get the, to, to get the program started and figure out where we want to go, and then every year, we will basically be coming back with different projects. For example, line maintenance had $100,000 worth of manhole replacements in this last year's budget, and that would be considered part of our INI program that we would be moving forward with. That dollar amount might have to jump up based on the findings in the report. And we would also be implementing sewer main lining and different construction figures like that.
So ultimately, this should save the ratepayers money, right?
Correct.
Their monthly bills, they'll see some kind of impact eventually.
Right, and we're also looking at it in the fact that if our operation and maintenance is ahead of some of the issues, we'll be looking at less backups and less headaches on the community in that aspect as well.
Actually, I can't believe that. Go ahead. So, I guess from start to finish, we approve this, what are we looking at? Is it a year, two years to get the study done and all the other training and everything?
(Laughter)
Well, I see you expert, right?
We'll start with the flow metering.
Come up here so the folks at home can hear you. Thank you.
We'll, we'll start with the flow metering in the spring, because that's really when we get our wet weather influences on our sewers, we'll really be able to find, you know, how bad it is, and we can, we'll have more flow meters, more than just a plant, we'll have them up in the system, because we want to be able to prioritize the areas, what's the leakiest, what's the worst, and you're gonna have some areas that won't need any work at all. So, you know, those are some things that kind of think around from a long-term standing plant boy, but plan, planning purposes, but once that data gets collected, it'll probably be about midsummer, and then that's when we'll go through the prioritization process, and then the, some of the manhole inspections, and then we'll be given the TV crews, a list of lines to go, to go be looking at, and I estimate that probably taken, probably until the spring of 2019, so I'd say summer of 2019, we'd probably be getting wrapped up with this piece of it.
So, what happens if, when we do our camera look-through, there's somebody's, somebody's pipe from, from their home is causing a problem in our sewer? Is that the city's issue, or is that the homeowner's issue? Where is the fine line? Because they like to know who to send the bill to.
The city of Gardner owns the mains, and once those laterals reach off of the mains, it is actually the ownership of the resident.
Okay.
As part of the program though, we will probably be coming back with you with a private INI program, which will deal with the illicit connections made from downspouts directly to sewer laterals on private property, and that's where Lucas's group and the work that they've done at other communities will help us and help you guys determine if we want to proceed with that as the city footing the bill completely, as some communities do, or providing a portion of that money as a rebate. There's multiple ways that Lucas's group has handled that in other communities, and that will be kind of a policy level decision that needs to be made after we figure out what's wrong with the system.
How do we find out how somebody's tied in illegally? Because if it's like on the downspouts and into the house, and then do you guys run in the cameras all the way up through?
So, that kind of includes a combination of a couple different things, so we do what we call smoke testing, and I don't know if you've heard of this or not, but we put, basically, inject smoke into the sewer mains.
Could we do that on the 4th of July? That'll just add to the ambiance.
I wouldn't recommend it. But, and it's, it's a really inexpensive way to really find your big leakers, so we could find some, there may be some busted up sewers, long creeks and streamways that, you know, those are gonna be easy fixes, and maybe some manholes that are, you know, lids are gone or so damaged, and it's just taking a lot of water, but that smoke will also travel up the sewer laterals, and at that, to the houses, and at that point, it'll come out the downspouts.
So it's coming out of the, at the...
Yeah. And we also, we do a pretty extensive PR effort on this thing too, with door hangers and whatnot, to really tell the public, hey, you know, fill your P-traps inside your houses with water, and that, that prevents the...
That's a good idea.
You know, it kind of just reminds people, they, they probably know anyway if they're getting sewer gas, and they would smell sewer gas, but it's just a way to kind of, you know, if those P-traps are sealed up, then with water, they shouldn't be getting smoke in the house, so, but that's, that's how we find a lot of these leaks.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, and that was my question, I was more concerned about the citizen's touch, and understanding how we were gonna get in front of that with PR, because we learned some valuable lessons in our street maintenance program and curbs, so we want to make sure that we're not duplicating, you know, perception is reality. And then understanding to Councilman Melton's point is, you know, how are we gonna share that cost, you know, kind of what's the demarcation? So, my answers are, I'm good.
Mark?
I've been trying to be quiet on this and let you all speak on it since I was, you know, involved in this decision.
Ah, okay. So, I'm pretty familiar with it. We spoke about it for, I don't know, an hour. The one thing that the UAC, the big takeaway from the meeting was that it's, it's a program that not only do, does the staff get training, but we also have an additional set of data points that we don't have right now, so we can use that data in the future, because these type of things aren't gonna change drastically over the years. So it gives us a baseline that we don't have. We complained about INI for years, but we don't have any proof, I mean, great proof.
The only thing I have is regarding some of the newer subdivisions, a lot of these are concrete lines. Some of them were done with the same kind of substandard concrete that the curbs were done with, and I'm concerned about how we would have to go in and replace any kind of mains if that's the case. What, I mean, we're talking about some significant dollars if that's the case.
I believe for the most part that the sanitary sewer that was installed is PVC in those new...
Okay, I saw some concrete lines in some of the...
That would be the storm sewer, for sure would be concrete in those areas.
Yeah. Okay. Alright. Any other questions, comments? Alright, thank you gentlemen, appreciate it. I'd like to entertain a motion on committee recommendation, item number one.
So moved.
Second?
Motion more, second Melton, that we authorize the city administrator to execute a contract with TREC Design Group LLC in an amount not to exceed 432,000...
a contract with TREC Design Group LLC in an amount not to exceed $432,943 for the inflow and infiltration study and analysis project. All those, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Committee recommendation, item number one, passes.
Thank you.
There's no old business. We're going to new business. New business item number one, consider signing the 2018 County Assisted Road System CARS Agreement for the Santa Fe Waverly to Poplar Project. Mr. Michael Kramer, good evening.
Good evening. So what this action does is just, it's the agreement that actually puts in place the funding for the Santa Fe project, for the CARS portion of it. As the CAF points out, last year, we submitted our schedule of projects for, I believe, 2018 through 2021. And this, and then this is just coming back with that approved agreement to fund a portion of our 175th and Waverly project. In addition to the funds that come from CARS, we also have SMAC money, which is the Stormwater Maintenance County Funding. And then also, the city will be putting in up to $1.6 million. And so we have a good portion funded by grants through other county programs and then our matching funds.
Thank you very much, Michael. Hold tight. Is there anyone in the gallery this evening who would like to make comment on new business item number one? If you would like to do so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. With no one coming forward, questions from the council? All right, hearing none. We'll build ourselves a road. I'm going to entertain a motion on new business item number one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Gregor Sack, second Winters, that we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Johnson County for design and construction of the Santa Fe Waverly to Poplar Project. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? New business item number one passes. New business item number two, consider executing a contract with Capri Pools and Aquatics in the amount of $188,738 for replacement of the pool filter at the Gardner Aquatic Center. Jason Bruce, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. New business item, before you deny, is the replacement of the pool filter system on the new side of the Gardner Aquatic Center. The current filter system that we have right now in place is 11 years old and is not flowing at its appropriate rate, or it's not properly backwashing the pool water. Since the system in its inception in 2007 was only the fourth filter like this one in the country that was used at the time, had an unproven track record, and it's been a constant headache for staff to maintain over the last several years. Departments had to replace multiple pumps, valves, actuators, along with other various components to keep the pool operational. Throughout the 2017 season, the system had multiple malfunctions that would cause staff to come in after hours and backwash the water. For those that aren't familiar with backwashing, pool water is a necessary function in order to keep the, to stabilize the water chemicals for operations for the next day. The system would only have to backwash the pool once every two weeks when it first started. However, staff would be coming in every other day, spending a total of 55 hours just in overtime to backwash after eight o'clock at night. Despite many efforts to repair the pool system last year, we still had to shut down operations for four days. If it's not replaced, the city anticipates that we would incur at least a minimum of $2,700 in overtime costs in the 2018 season. With those service calls from last year outside of staff use, we had to call in specialized companies. We spent $1,350 to help out with that as well. We're looking at each day of operation that the pool is out of system, we're looking at $2,400 in lost admissions and concessions. The Gardner Aquatic Center has a daily average of 10 to 522 people per day over the last two years. And it's, you know, it offers many valuable services to the citizens of Gardner. It's a popular gathering place in our community and provides different recreational opportunities that are one of the kind in the city. Additionally, the Gardner Aquatic Center sells season pool passes to all residents and non-residents starting next month in March. You know, if the pool filter's not replaced, the closures of the pool continues. This may have a negative effect on the perception of the city and its facilities by the passholders. One thing to know on this system, that if we don't have proper backwashing of the pool, it's, the water can become very unsanitary. So you can get things like E. coli, hepatitis A, various other pathogens as well. In August of last year, the city of Gardner hired Water's Edge Aquatic Design to provide consulting services for the design of a new pool filter system, as well as assisting in the bidding process with the RFPs. Those were sent to seven potential installers. And in January of this year, we received three bid proposals back. And per our city's purchasing policy, staff recommends that council approves the installation of the new filter system through Capri Pools for $188,730. That's a mouthful. Tonight, I wanted to recognize that Jake Domi, our certified pool operator with the city, is here in attendance, as well as Steve Shank from Water's Edge, one of our consultants, to answer any questions that you have on the project.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to open up the forum for public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to make comment on new business item number two, please come forward, state your name and address for the record to be heard. With no one coming forward, questions for Jason or Jay or any of the other folks that are here from Parks and Rec? Yes?
I'm just curious whether or not we budgeted for this? Is this something that's just, it's just something that popped up? And also, how long will the, can we expect a filter like this to last in the future? And how should we plan for this in the future?
I'll discuss that when I'm up. I'm up next.
Oh.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Rich?
Well, I was just going to add, my thing is, this is not the fourth time where this has been installed, I guess, and this time again, right? This is a proven system that we don't have to spin around for a long time?
Yes.
Fantastic. That's all I want to make sure of.
Yes, Todd?
Looking at the bids there, the first two are very similar, very close. But the ones in Paola and the other ones in Edwards, I don't know why. Is there any, you know, as far as maintenance or, I mean, if they're a town over, it's a lot easier to call them up. Is there any, any benefit to that, I guess? Or do we just have to go the lowest bid?
Well, per the purchasing policy, you know, staff just recommends low bid to council. I have spoken with Water's Edge, and they do have experience with both Carruthers and Capri, and they have nothing but great things to say about both of them.
Yeah. I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
No, go ahead.
Sorry.
In that bid, it says that it's 105 days, so 15 weeks. So by some quick calculations, that means from next Monday, that would take us to Memorial Day. So do we have any idea if we're going to be up against the deadline there to be open?
Per council's approval, tomorrow, I will order the filters, which take the longest lead time. And so that's the first and most important thing to get on the books, is getting those filters ordered. But per the proposal that they turned in, that they will meet the preliminary running of the pool system, which would be the week before we operate, with a final walkthrough the week of the pool opening.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
What does this filter look like? I mean, it seems, I mean, it's got to be some just monster filter. Is that?
I'll have Steve come. He can probably like show you better.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, because I'm just trying to visualize.
The new or old one?
The new one. Yeah. Old one, I don't care about.
Two brown tanks. I forget the size there. I think they're six-foot diameter, pressure sand filters, and probably six, eight-foot tall. Each filter has two floors within it. So they're big round tanks, essentially.
And we have, the ones that are out there, the same kind of thing now, or?
At the old pool, yes.
Yeah, okay. So it's not going to visibly look any different than it'll be?
It will a little bit on the exterior, on the concession seating side. But we're going to put in the bid specs, there's a privacy fence with slats.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gregor?
No, good.
I did have one question, and that is going back to something that Todd Winters brought up, and I think it might be worth some discussion at the dais, and that is, we've got less than the $300 difference between the low bid and the local bid. Doesn't it make some sense to consider the local bid?
Here, here.
Given the fact it's only, and again, we want to keep our money local, and our maintenance might be local if there's anything that goes wrong. So I just wanted to open it up to the group to discuss, since I don't have a vote in this.
Well, I had the same question Todd did. So after this is installed, further maintenance and just typical work that would need to be done on this type of system, is that something that is very often, and we would need to be calling out this same contractor multiple times?
Not really. They should be fairly maintenance-free.
Okay. Still wouldn't hurt to have somebody close.
Yeah.
I would amend. I would make a motion to amend for the $300 shop local, have the luxury of having a maintenance tech close at hand, although it's a low-maintenance system. Anybody else would agree?
Can we just ask them to cut their bid $300?
No. Well, it's an RFP process. I mean, you go through one set of skill.
I think, yeah, I think it makes sense to stay as local as possible with something like this.
Yeah, it's $270.
Well, there's a motion on the floor right now to, motion, Gregor Sack, second Melton, we authorize the city administrator to execute a contract with Carruthers Construction Company in the amount of $189,000 for replacement of the pool filter at the Gardner Aquatic Center. Any more discussion on this?
Just, again, you feel comfortable with them and their timeline would be similar?
Carruthers?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Okay. I'm just making the modification here. Okay. With no other discussion, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Looks like we have a side conversation here with legal counsel. I'm sorry. Are we good?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay. All right, then the motion passes. This is item number two has been amended and passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business item number three, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city of Gardner, Kansas to equip a public building and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof, all pursuant to KSA 12-1736 at SEC municipal pool equipment. Hello, Laura.
Hello. So how are we going to pay for this?
Right.
All right. It's a quick calculation by financial advisor Kimmel. Says your debt service over 10 years, because this would be one of those cases, you either make a decision to pay cash, or you do the useful life of the asset, which, which should make it 10 years, and the last one was 11. So if you want to do general obligation bonds, $23,000 a year, which is truly immaterial. Right. So at least as far as your debt service fund goes. So if you are okay with it, nothing in my resolution changed because it was a not-to-exceed amount that already built in an estimated cost of issuance, that 270 means nothing to me on this. So if you're good with it, because you're going to issue debt, you have to, remember, you have to formally declare that you're going to do it, and that you're going to reimburse yourself for the cost of those improvements, and that's what this resolution does.
Thanks, Laura. Any comments, questions on, from the public on new business item number three? With no one coming forward, questions on pending resolution number 1980?
I have a question, and I just want to use this as a, just a test and tune, maybe. But if we were to fund this with cash, just hear me out for a second. How would that, what's the pros and cons of that versus going debt service? I'm just trying to kind of go back to two meetings ago and understand how that.
Okay, so, excuse me, you just used another $200,000 of your opportunity to do other projects that you may prioritize. And as I teach at the Citizens Academy, because this is a useful life of more than a year, anybody who's using the pool now, if we pay cash, everybody that comes in next summer gets a free ride.
Yeah, no, I understand the amortization of it.
Right.
I'm not for it.
Right.
I just wanted to put it on the table for just understanding and discussion.
Sure. Sure. It takes a really big bite out of your cash flow, frankly.
Right, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
There's no penalty for early payment.
No, huh? No, because remember, we do those refinancing, so we get a chance, and we build a bond call, and we'll do all that stuff later. This is just the prelim setup for you.
Well, thanks for indulging me.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Since this is a resolution, we're going to have to have this as a call of the roll. We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Moore, second Winters, that we adopt resolution 1980, authorizing the city of Gardner, Kansas to equip a public building and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof, all pursuant to KSA 12-1736 at SEC municipal pool equipment. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Gregor Sack?
Yes.
Councilman Melton?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilman Winters?
Yes.
Councilman Dalton?
Yes.
Resolution 1980 passes. Thank you, Laura. New business item number four, consider adopting a resolution revising the city of Gardner Personnel Policy Manual 2010 Edition.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes.
Hi. I want to first draw your attention to the council action form, which is new business item number four. And just as a quick history, since we have two new individuals, we did have a city council work session was held on October 2 of 2017. And at that time, we presented suggested revisions to the personnel policies to the governing body at that time. During that work session, the governing body advised the human resource manager of desired changes to the personnel policies, and all of those have been made. In addition to that, on January 17, 2018, we met with the city's department directors to further review the proposed changes. And additional input was received, and all of that input is reflected in these revisions. So with that, I'll draw your attention to the, what's on your screen now, the human resource policy revisions. And what we're doing tonight is to go over the major changes. Some of the things that we covered before were really housekeeping items, like moving from one chapter to another chapter. So these are things that we felt were very important. They were also items that were questioned by both the, by members of the city council and that we discussed at our department director meeting. So the first item has to do with overtime and authorization and eligibility. It is being moved to another chapter. And currently, employees get overtime if they did not actually work, but receive paid leave, such as vacation, sick, and holiday. So in other words, somebody may not actually work 40 hours, perhaps on a Monday, they took a vacation day, but then later in the week, they might have worked additional hours that, with the vacation. have worked additional hours that, with the vacation leave, put them over 40 hours. So right now, they are getting overtime for that. And as it says here, we surveyed 13 cities, and eight of the 13 only pay overtime on hours worked. In discussions with the department directors, further discussions with the department directors, one of the key cities that does not count vacation, or that does count vacation, sick leave, and holidays as time worked for overtime is Olathe. And of course, Olathe, in addition to Johnson County, is one of our key competitors for employees, especially for police officers. So if we change this to not do what we're doing now, we might actually disadvantage ourselves in retention and recruitment. So we have, and you'll see this throughout this presentation, we have a decision point here that we would like to receive feedback from you as to what your decision would be. Decision point one would be to only pay overtime for hours actually worked over 40 hours. Okay? The second item is, in effect, to not change what we're doing now, and pay overtime for all hours paid over 40 hours. So after further consideration, we would actually, and in further discussions with the department directors, we would like to recommend that we do not change our current practice, because we feel it will disadvantage us and continue doing what we're doing right now, as far as paying overtime. Any questions?
Which one of those are we doing right now, I guess, one or two?
We're doing, we're doing number two right now. We're paying overtime for all hours paid, as opposed to all hours worked. So we think that that would be the best thing to do now, to continue that.
Alan, you spoke about disadvantages. Is it disadvantage amongst all departments, or is it just the other police department?
All departments. Yeah.
All right, just hold off on the questions. Let me take your notes, because I know that there's folks who've.
Okay. Should I just, okay, I'll just continue.
I think we probably should go through the entire presentation, and then
Okay.
if there's questions from the public, they need to be heard first.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Just, I'm trying to stop, keep the order going the way it's.
Okay. Okay. So the next item then is on holidays. Currently, employees who work on a holiday observed by the city receive straight time pay. Okay, they're giving, something we need to consider is they're giving up their holiday for work, so that's time they're not able to spend with their family. Therefore, we're recommending changing this to employees who work on a holiday observed by the city will receive time and a half their regular pay. So of the 10 cities that responded to the question on this, five do pay time and a half, and five pay straight time. So they will be paid eight hours of holiday pay, and if they work over eight hours on a holiday, which occurs now, they will still get double time for those hours worked over eight hours. Okay, so that is not, that's not changing. So, I guess I'm not changing this. Okay. So, again, the decision point would be to continue to pay non-exempt employees straight time when working on a city-observed holiday. That's what we're doing now. What we're recommending is that all non-exempt employees who are required to work on a city-observed holiday shall be paid holiday pay plus, plus time and a half their regular rate of pay for all hours worked on the observed holiday. Okay? So if we want to continue then, for on-call and callback pay, there is actually no personnel policy that covers this subject. There are various memos from various departments that cover this, but we thought it would be best to be consistent, to have a personnel policy that covers this subject. So currently, this is something we just recently discovered, for departments other than the police department, they are paid one hour of their hourly salary for just being on call during the week, and two hours on weekends and holidays. So if they actually need to come in and work over an hour, they're paid based on hours worked. So in other words, they're getting straight time pay for at least an hour or two hours on weekends. So what our proposal is, is that non-exempt employees who are called in to work at a non-scheduled time will be paid for a minimum of two hours, and this time will be paid at time and a half their regular hourly pay. So the decision point on this is, of course, currently, there is no personnel policy that covers this subject. And again, for departments other than PD, well, I just covered that, they're paid one hour of their regular hourly salary just for being on call. So this would actually be an enhancement for the police department, for being on call during the week and two hours on weekends. That's how that's going right now. And what we're recommending, decision point two, which is hopefully what you'll decide to do, is that non-exempt employees who are on, who are called in to work at a non-scheduled time will be paid for a minimum of two hours, and this time will be paid at time and a half their regular hourly pay. So that's what our recommendation is on that. And this will standardize the practice throughout the city. Of course, this will also apply to all employees, including the police department. The next item has to do with cell phones. Currently, department directors, employees, including police officers, carry city-owned cell phones. For some, this is cumbersome, so they would like to, like the opportunity to use their own phone for city business in lieu of a city-owned phone. So we are proposing that we give a choice to those designated persons, the option to carry a city-owned cellphone, or receive a stipend of $35 per month for using their own phone for city business. There would be no additional cost to the city for this. So again, the decision would be do not have a stipend program, and employees with city-owned cell phones will continue to carry them. Or the second point would be give a choice to those designated persons with city-owned cell phones, the option to continue to carry a city-owned cellphone, or receive a stipend of $35 per month for using their own cellphone for city business. Of course, they would have to sign the appropriate documents for them to understand that, of course, this could be taxed, and also that it could be subject to the open records, open records policies. Okay, on promotional increases, in several sections of these policies, it's required to give a 5% increase when employee is promoted. Okay? So let me give you some examples in recent, recent history. You know, we've talked in the past about issues with police salaries, as an example. And one of, one of the issues is that when we promoted people from, let's say, officer to corporal, corporal to sergeant, officer to sergeant, or to the captains, we were actually only able to give them a 5% increase unless they were below the minimum of the range. So to be flexible, we would like to change it to state that the increase shall be consistent with internal and external equity, and shall be sufficient to bring the employee's salary at least to the minimum of the new range, and not to exceed the maximum of the new range. The 5% will, in many cases, still be the norm, but we think having flexibility when needed will keep our salaries competitive. And the same situation really applies to demotions. So it would be promotions, keep forgetting to do this, promotions, demotions, salary grade changes, and job reclassifications. Of course, of all of these, the most common would be the general promotion. So again, the decision point would be to continue to give a 5% or to the minimum of the range increase when an employee is promoted, demoted, salary grade change, or job reclassification. And the decision point we're recommending is that the salary change shall be consistent with internal and external equity, and shall be sufficient to bring the employee's salary to at least the minimum of the new range, and not to exceed the maximum of the new, of the new range. 5% will still consider to be the norm, but we think having flexibility when needed will keep our salaries competitive. Okay, working out of class, if you recall, we discussed this before. Currently, the changes allow the city administrator to pay an individual based on internal, the changes would allow the city administrator to pay an individual based on internal and external equity, rather than just a 5% increase when they are placed in a higher position as a temporary assignment. Also, and this was discussed normally at the work session, also, the increase will be backdated to the date of the assignment takes place, once the assignment lasts 10 days. If you recall, the current policy requires the person to actually be in the temporary position for 10 days before he or she receives any increase. Now, and then they don't, so they don't get any additional money for the first 10 days. So now, after the 10 days, and this was a recommendation by the council, is to, after that 10 days, is to go back and make, make the increase retroactive. So the decision point would be to continue to pay a 5% increase when an individual is placed, when an individual is placed in a temporary assignment, or the one we're recommending is to pay an individual in a temporary out-of-class assignment based on internal and external equity, rather than just a 5% increase, and also backdate that to the previous 10 days. Okay, payment of sick leave upon separation. So this and the shared leave pool are both additions to the sick leave policy. The shared leave pool was actually a recommendation by members of our safety committee, who have had their coworkers out and not able to donate sick leave for them, and then their coworker wasn't receiving any pay, or at least any sick leave pay. So the first part of this, though, is that an employee separating employment in good standing with the City of Gardner after 12 months of consecutive service will be compensated for 20% of their accrued and unused sick leave at their current rate of K. An employee who's terminated because of violating a City of Gardner personnel policy will not be eligible for this. And I believe in the past, we calculated the, the cost of this to be around $20,000 a year. Shared leave pool, employees would like for us to have the shared leave pool for them to donate their sick leave. I spelled two wrong there, but for others to use. Of course, this will require tight control in looking at what other cities and counties do. Johnson County has a very good policy that we would probably tweak to use for ours. So the decision point here would be to not revise the sick leave policy, and do not initiate a shared leave pool, or to, when employees in good, and also, when employees in good standing resign after at least one year of service, compensate them for 20% of their accrued and unused sick leave at their current rate of pay. So in other words, we'd either pay them, the decision point is to continue what we're doing now, or pay them for 20% of their sick leave. I think this will also motivate them not to utilize their sick leave once they've given a notice of resignation, and also, prior to that, to not abuse it. I'm not saying we have abusers, but probably every organization does have some people who abuse their sick leave. And then also, then to establish the sick leave pool. Okay, and on separation, this is the last section, is currently, the policy requires all exempt employees to give four weeks' notice. This is atypical in changing it, or would like to change it, to state that employees in management positions are to give at least four weeks' notice. And then also, as part of that, using leave after resignation, or at least resignation notice, we'd like to add that employee may not count the use of vacation leave or personal holiday as part of the two or four-week notice period. This is to ensure the employees actually at work the final weeks of their employment. So the decision point on that would be to continue to require exempt employees to give four weeks' resignation notice, also to allow employees to use leave time as part of their notice time. We don't encourage that, but I think from time to time, that does happen. And then the second one would be to change management positions, to change that management positions are to give at least four weeks' notice, and employee may not count the use of vacation leave or personal holiday as part of the two or four-week notice period. Okay? And then one more, reduction in force guidelines. If there is a reduction in force, an employee is offered a position in a higher pay grade, then what they currently are in, their salary would be determined as any other promotion, or if it's in a lower pay grade or demotion, rather than restricting it to a 5% increase or decrease. So the decision point on this is that if there is a reduction in force, and an employee is offered a position in a higher pay, we leave it the same, then they would receive a 5% increase. What we're recommending is that if there is a reduction in force, and an employee is offered a position in a higher pay, in a higher pay grade than what they currently are in, their salary would be determined as in any other promotion or demotion, rather than restricting it to 5% change. So that is my presentation. Open it to questions, or?
Let's open it up first to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public on new business item number four? With no one coming forward, I think we're going ahead and hit these decision points. You don't mind going back in the slide presentation? We're going to hit these one by one. And that way, we can move through this pretty quickly, because I have a feeling that we're going to be in agreement with most of these particular, there were a couple of questions, probably on some things that don't seem to be mutually exclusive, but I'm sure that the folks at the dais here made some, taking some good notes. And we'll start with this one here, which is the policy provisions for overtime. So which one would you like to start with?
Let's see, which one?
I'm sorry?
Okay, which, okay.
At the end of the changes that you have here, I'd just like to add one more that we discussed as part of the leadership team that I'd like for the council to consider as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is somewhat open discussion, we kind of free-flowing, but I'll start on the left, my left.
Thank you, Mayor. On the overtime pay, are we under-
On the overtime pay, are we understaffed?
I would say, well, we're going to probably be requesting more positions, but part of the issue sometimes is just, not that our turnover is high or anything, but, you know, there are vacancies that occur, and people have to pick up extra hours at times. And then, of course, I know in the spring and summer months in particular, for the park department, they definitely do work quite a bit of overtime.
Yeah, I mean, they're a great department, but just holistically, I mean, if we're concerned about overtime and not knowing how many annual overtime hours we've paid out for the year for the entire city, I mean, that would, that would be a litmus test for me, or at least where I come from professionally, that I need to bring in more staff so that I'm paying straight time and drive down my overcosts, which are a real cost.
Well, I mean, if you, I don't have it with me, but we certainly do track overtime hours, so we could certainly get that for you. But I think, I think what we're talking about are two different things. One is, can we do what we can do with additional staffing to reduce the amount of overtime we have? And I'm sure we probably could. The other is, you're never going to reduce overtime totally.
No, I agree.
So when we do, when this does occur, this is how we would like to pay it.
Okay. Carry on. All right, Rich?
So, real quick, on this, kind of ties into what we're talking about right now, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit, though. For the time and a half, for the, we're going to have time and a half for those who worked over 40 hours on a holiday? Is that, that's correct, right? That's what we're talking about? But is that for?
There's a double time and a half.
There's a double time and a half, but is that for, are we going to apply the same thing for if they worked before that, to that same?
Well, what we're proposing is regardless of whether it's over 40 hours or not, if somebody works on a holiday, let's say Christmas Day is on a Monday, as an example, at that time, they're not going to have any overtime.
Right.
But because it's Christmas Day, for those eight hours, they will receive time and a half.
That's what I wanted to make sure, that we weren't going to hold that to.
Correct.
Is that time and a half plus holiday pay?
They would still get their holiday, and then they would get paid time and a half for working the holiday. Because everybody gets the holiday pay.
Can I sign up for that?
We're giving aside the holiday.
Everybody, everybody gets holiday pay regardless of whether they work or don't work.
Sure, sure.
Okay? So what this is doing, and there's not very many people, police department is probably would be our biggest users. If they work on a holiday, you're, we're asking them to take time away from their family and celebrating it perhaps at an odd time. So if they work on that holiday, as our thank you to them, and to make sure that they feel whole, we want to pay them time and a half.
That was it? That was the one thing I wanted to make sure we were clear on.
Okay, great. Just more?
Yeah, I have, I'm just kind of wondering how much these things cost. We have all these, we have three different pay policy changes here. One has the, has the potential to save us money, the other two are going to add cost. This is the one that would potentially save us money if we changed. Is there, is it, I mean, is the amount that it would save us in the noise such that, I mean, these things won't ever balance out, or? I mean, I guess what I'm looking for is, how do we pay for this? This is, I mean, this is just additional cost, and we're, I mean, paying overtime for hours that people didn't actually work, I mean.
Right. Well, this is, right now, that's what we're doing. So we want to just continue doing that, so there won't be any additional cost.
Right, if we did not continue doing it, how much would we save?
If we did not do that, I think, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I think the cost would be minimal.
Yeah, my question was about the cost also. If it is minimal, and we are competing, again, with surrounding communities, and we're talking minimal amount of money, I think it's money well spent then.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. All right, so what's our, what's our consensus, gentlemen, on decision point, number, on this decision point? They are mutually exclusive, so we need to choose.
I think that personally, if there's, if there's not much difference in cost, it doesn't make a lot of sense to change the policy, but that's just my opinion.
I mean, I'd be interested to see, like, how many people actually had this scenario happen.
Well, oh.
I was just going to say, even with this policy, we're, we're still empowering the directors to schedule their staff appropriately, so.
Absolutely.
You know, there's no requirement that this would necessarily save us a whole bunch if we switched or not, depending on what the situation is.
Right. The onus falls on the directors to manage their schedules.
We pay them to do that.
Yes.
There you go.
So decision point number two on this?
Yeah, don't change.
Think so? Okay, all right, next. And this section is, you guys are looking at the personnel guidelines.
This has to, has to do with working on a city observed holidays, which we were, we briefly just spoke of.
Yes.
I'm for number two, the time I want to have.
Yeah, now, this, this might have some significant impact on.
Actually.
Or does it?
It doesn't have a lot of impact. Again, the department that this affects the most would probably be the police department that works regularly, obviously, on holidays. There are some other departments that may need to work on a holiday, but as a, as a normal scheduling, not, not much scheduling occurs on that.
I just got to poll the, yes?
Question on this, so if they're required to work on the city holiday, so they're getting straight time, then they're going to get another one and a half times?
No, they get, they get time and a half for working on the holiday, and then they get holiday pay. Now, everybody, and that's.
So if they worked eight hours, they're going to get two and a half times?
Well, you could look at it that way, but let me, let me, my emphasis is to say that everyone gets holiday pay, so that's not advantaging them. Everybody already gets that.
Right.
So it's really, because they had to go in and work, they have to get paid, they're getting paid the time and a half.
So the difference is double time versus double time and a half?
Right. So how does that resolve with, if you're already on call, because we have the other change there, where we're going to pay them two hours minimum if we want to go that route? So if somebody's on call, I'm thinking utilities.
Right.
And now they're required to work because there's a water main break on a city holiday, how is that going to play in? How do those two resolve one another?
Well, in, speaking to our payroll person, that would end, we'd probably end up paying them double time on that. If they, if they got called back in on a holiday, they would get paid double time.
For a minimum of two hours.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to clarify also, on the city observed holiday or the actual holiday?
City observed.
Both. It would be observed or the actual, because sometimes the holiday might be on the weekend, and we would observe it on that, depending on what it follows, it might be, so this would be on a city observed holiday or actual holiday, just for clarity.
And how many holidays do we celebrate as a part of the policy?
Six, seven?
Six, seven?
This is not a very large.
It's not a, yeah. It would only be that if they work on a actual holiday, but we observe it differently.
Yeah, the only major holiday we really don't, is President's Day, and then all of the other holidays, I think.
All right, I'm going to poll the body here, unless other ones have any questions? All right, one or two?
Two.
Two?
Two.
All right, we have a consensus on two? Okay. Decision point two, let's go to the next one? Okay. So this is that callback time again?
Yes.
That we had discussed before, it's new.
Correct.
And I think you already done a summarization of that very well, there, Mr. Bob. What, what section would this be? What new section would this be?
This would be under comp.
But do you know what the section, the number?
Let me look here and see if I can find it here.
Compensation is in section one of, section four, right?
I think it's.
Section five, I'm sorry.
Five, yeah, section five.
So it would just be added to the end of section five?
Yes.
So you'd five. Probably under salaries, it would be five, one. Yeah, section 1069, or 1068, I'll put back 1069. Yeah, okay, cool. We're cool with this new policy?
I've got a question.
Yeah, we've got, we have more.
Yes, go on, Mark.
So, let's say somebody's worked 36 hours for the week, called back in, they're going to get their two hours, I get that, no problem, but if they work, let's say, three hours, and they're still less than their 40, it's still straight time, right?
No.
Okay, I mean, for the third hour.
No, if they're called in on a non-scheduled time, all of that time worked will be a time and a half regardless of how much they worked previous to that, because they're being called in at a non-scheduled time. Now, if they're scheduled to work, then obviously, it's straight time.
So to Mark's point, if Randy worked 32 hours, because he took off Friday for whatever, and then I got called back out on a Saturday, I'd get paid straight time of 32 hours or less than 40 hours, and then the time and a half at two.
Or whatever, correct.
I can handle that. Sounds kind of unionized, but nonetheless. Any additional? Yes, Mark?
No, I.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, let's go ahead and have a quick poll. Yes, no, on this, it's just a simple.
Yeah, I like it.
Yes, yes, yes.
I like the standardization.
Okay, good, excellent.
Cell phones is next.
What, 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 could you go back real quick, one last, one before this?
Okay.
Yeah, 4115, 4115 is, it's in this, benefits, defined benefits here, so. I was looking at this section here, because I missed the section four. So that's a brand-new policy.
Yes.
Yeah, I.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and move forward. Okay. I mean, to be honest with you, just from my personal, number two is more in line with what private business does.
Exactly.
Regarding the BYOD.
Yes.
Bring your own device type of policy, so.
I'm fine with it.
I just had the question of how we arrived at $35, and why would they, why would the employee be taxed again if the employee is already paying for that cell phone bill? Because in my world, I'm, I'm a little more than 35, and there's no taxing, it's just a straight reimbursement.
Well, the $35 is the bill right now, for instance, I have a city-owned cellphone, and when I get the bill for my city-owned cellphone, that's what, that's the amount it is, so that's, that's how we reach that.
But how about the taxes?
I would defer to Laura on anything regarding taxes, but we're, I mean, we're giving them this money for use of their own cellphone.
I understand.
So.
I have a question, or I would like to just raise a concern that, you mentioned it in your presentation, that there is a, an obligation to uphold public records on a personal device.
Correct.
So we want to make sure that we had a really strong agreement in place, and that anyone that's going to take this stipend would be made aware that they could be forced to forfeit their cellphone for an undetermined period of time while city records are, are, you know, taken off of it, and that, and that any and all personal information on that cellphone would be.
Potentially subject to.
Correct.
Subject to whatever. So we want to make sure that's in the agreement.
I think a lot of people, for just that reason, if they understand that, are not going to do it, including myself, but others feel safe in doing it, so it'd be up to them.
Yeah, and I mean, this is the same, this is the same thing, I know, we've got Comacora here that we've got to manage as city employees or city, city elected officials, however, you know, I think that the same kind of stipulation, if you have intellectual property, for example, on a BYOD device, and I'm going to, I'm kind of venturing into legal territory here, but that intellectual property, if you're getting a stipend, belongs to the company, does not belong to you. And so you, you forfeit already ownership of that information when you, when you, when you sign those kind of agreements. Now, am I saying that this is a good thing for the, for the, you know, for the, for the employees? I mean, it's a, it's a standard, it's part and parcel now of BYOD, so, anyway, yes?
So, to take that further, how are we going to enforce that those documents stay in place? And furthermore, if, if the employees are incentivized to use their own phone, I mean, I know everybody's probably brought one into the building anyway, their personal phone, but if we're going to have those phones being used more often, we have the chance of something, you know, some security risk on one of those personal phones being introduced to our network. So how are we going to resolve that from an IT perspective?
I have talked with Greg, our IT manager, and he has assured us that he can make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Okay, I can't, can't explain the technical aspects of it, but, but he has assured me that he could protect us.
Should we look at a way to back up anybody who's using their stuff for personal?
I think we're already doing that, aren't we? Anything that's on the network is being backed up on the.
On the network, but not to what you're asking about the phones with the documents.
Right, so if there's something out there, so it doesn't get just randomly deleted, and?
Well, I think Greg, I mean, we've had situations where Greg has gone way back in time and pulled up emails that we needed for various things, and so, and I would trust Greg that he's able to do that.
I think what, what I'm hearing, though, is on the personal phone, where it has the city's intellectual property, is how are we going to back that up and ensure, which we don't currently back up the personal cell phones.
I'll have to check with Greg on that.
Yes, I think we need some clarification on this before we move on.
Before we approve.
It seems like we're getting into the IT aspect.
Yes.
Because.
Well, it's inevitably going to go there.
Yeah, it has to, so.
So, one more question. Is there currently a prohibition on personal use of a city-owned cellphone?
Yes, we, well, we have a, can't think, like, like a part of our personnel policies are things that you can't use, like the computer and all of the electronic devices, there is a restriction on that.
So, and is that driven based on, was that decision made based on the fact that older policies were, older cellphone agreements were billed according to usage, and now we're on a different plan, I hope?
Yeah.
Where it's just pretty much unlimited?
Right, it's a flat rate.
We, we had that conversation with our, as we were in the department directors meeting with the IT manager, and what we have is, we have a data pool, and so we save money by sharing the data, because one user of the city's cellphone might not use as much data, another one might use more data, so we benefit. So if we allow the employees to use that, and they're streaming or using the data, then they're using the city's data that's part of our shared data pool. And so it could be quite costly to the city, which was his concern.
And, and when you mention that, is there any throttling that happens if they use X number of gigabits or gigabytes of data?
If we don't, if we don't use it?
No, if they do use it, if they use an excessive amount of data in that shared data plan, there are some that might throttle that out.
Right, yes. So, so right now, we can share between different, different employees. So there is some benefit to having that shared data pool. Whereas if we allow them to use it, you can, we can have a user using Netflix and use all the city's data.
Yeah. It sounds like it's not being throttled, but that's... Yes?
Another question. What do we have from a liability perspective? If you have a city-owned phone and you have your handbook that says you can't do X, Y, and Z with city property, sure. But if you've got your personal phone and you're doing whatever on your phone...
Or if you're on the VPN.
What are we opening up from a liability perspective as that being a city employee now using a city phone?
You know, Alan and I did work on a specific agreement with employees that we're gonna do this and it, I don't know, it's, it's probably got nine or, nine or ten different things that the employees commit to doing. I, it's been a while since I worked on that and I'm trying to remember what all's on that. But it was modeled, the city of Lenexa has, has this policy in place and they allow their employees to do that. There are other municipalities that do it. So, um, that's, that's kind of what we modeled that off of. Um, in terms of your question on liability, um, you know, I guess I'd probably have to hear more about your concerns, like if they had, is your concern if they had city data on there and then they inappropriately disclosed it or...
It, it could be something like that, but even just their personal actions, now that we're deeming this, it's their personal phone, but it's being used for city business. So, at that point, there's no distinction between if it's personal or business, correct? So now if somebody's defaming another city employee or a council member or who knows who, is that a city employee now doing that or is that a person doing that on their own free time?
Well, we do have, um, along those lines, I mean, we do have a social media policy which, which talks about acceptable, um, social media or internet interactions.
But that only applies to city phones, correct? It wouldn't apply to your personal phone?
It, it applies on any communications.
Okay.
Or on their personal computer.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel. This is, like you said, it's been done at several municipalities.
Right.
It, it, it has. The, the thing that makes this challenging from the private sector is, is really the, uh, the Open Records Act. Um, and, and the fact that, um, you know, if you do this as an employee, you are basically availing your phone to be subject to, and, and along with your private communications on there, to be subject to disclosure under the Open Records Act.
And that's something that needs to probably be front and center in disclosure when it comes to these kind of agreements. Because the city could actually encounter some liability if it's not disclosing.
Right, and that, that was, that was a big focus of the form.
Emphasized on the form.
Yeah, and that was my concern.
Yep.
So, I have a statement, I guess. So all this being said, and I think everything that has been said is spot-on, but really it comes down to the dollar. We're, it's a wash at the end of the day, whether we're gonna pay for your cellphone, sorry, I shouldn't point, your company's cellphone. We'll pay you to use your personal cellphone. The ripples are endless.
There, there's no cost.
I don't support this.
Well, yes, well, yes and no, because I'm sure there are quite a few city employees that already are using personal cellphones for city business. It's just that they're not getting paid for it. They're using...
And we need to get another phone.
They're using, they're using their, their phone and not getting any kind of benefit.
We have to provide them the tools to do their job.
We're using our personal phones for city business.
Yes, we are.
Without getting, getting compensated, so I mean...
We're being compensated once a month through your stipend.
Right, I guess, but I'm just saying, we, you know, we're already doing this.
I'm good with this stipend. I think it's a good...
I think it gives the employees some options and some flexibility, to me.
Yeah.
I mean, instead of having to use a city-owned phone and carry two phones, and that's the other thing, too. There's the whole reason why BYOD is, is popular to people now is because they don't want to have to carry two phones and a pager and a, you know, they want to be able to have one phone and be able to do all their business in one phone.
They'll make the choice and it's their responsibility to follow the, the directions.
And I'll ask IT about your concerns, Councilman Milton, about backing it up.
I would think there's some app out there that would allow us to do that.
There is.
I would think if we just put something in the policy that said that the only communication has to be through Outlook Exchange.
City, city.
Right, if you're not going around that, then it's automatically being pulled from the city server and being backed up. It's more just if you go around it and say, hey, here's a Facebook message or here's, you know, a tweet or here's an email out of my Gmail account, right? Those aren't backed up because there's no record of it. But if you put in a policy, go through the, whatever, you know, legalese we want to use, the city's email server.
Do we want to track, like, downloads to personal devices or other things that might get leaked out or shouldn't be out in public?
I think that's again, that's code of conduct right there.
Yeah, if we're...
How do you know where it comes from, though? If you don't track it? I'm just saying, I mean, it's a...
I don't, you know, there's so much that...
Yeah, we're overthinking this, guys.
That is really open to the public.
Yeah.
Anymore that, um, I'm not sure what somebody's going to secretly take from the city that somebody couldn't request anyway.
That kind of stuff goes on regardless of policy.
Since it comes down to the code of conduct, it's on them.
Yeah.
I was fine with it anyway.
All right, number, is it number two?
Yeah, number two.
All right, let's go on, please. All right, next.
That's it.
Okay. I don't think there's gonna be much, there's gonna be much on this.
I didn't think there was gonna be much on the last one.
I know. So, the current one is the, is one, the new, the post-policies number two. So...
Alan, at a base rate of five percent, what's the financial impact if everybody that was promoted had a five percent increase?
Uh, again, it would be very, very small because, uh, our, except when we did our career ladders, there is very few promotions now. We are gonna have some coming up with, uh, there's some vacancies in the police department because of, obviously of a retirement and then, uh, another position. So, there may be some, uh, costs there, but, uh, again, the, it's, it's very small. I, I'm sorry, I don't have a exact dollar amount.
Small means what, less than ten thousand, more than a hundred thousand? I mean...
I would say less than, well, definitely less than a hundred thousand, probably less than ten thousand.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like we're gonna be going with, uh, one or two down?
Two.
Two. Two, got it. All right. Looking at a class. This is one that we actually, this is one we actually recommended.
Right, exactly.
Unless the new council members have any additional thinking on this, I believe that it was unanimous last time we discussed the values.
Yeah, I was in the peanut gallery and I remember this. The question that I had from that gallery was if the employee does not perform in those ten days, it's based on performance, correct?
Correct.
Absolutely.
Take the seat and they wouldn't have any retro. Okay, fair enough.
They would be demoted back to...
An upset.
Yep.
All right. So we're good? Two?
Two.
All right.
Yeah.
Next, two. Now, here's one that I had a question about because it didn't seem like these were mutually exclusive. So, one says do not revise the sick leave policy and do not initiate a shared sick leave pool. The other one says, just the compensate a twenty percent of accrued unused sick leave.
Right, that might be... That, that might be, uh, that, that's my mis-typing here. So what we're saying here, what the decision would be, is to not, not revise the sick leave policy and leave it as is, or to revise the policy and, um, pay twenty percent of somebody's accrued sick leave when they leave and also implement a shared sick leave pool.
Okay. So twenty percent of accrued unused sick leave?
And that, I think we computed that would be, uh, like twenty thousand dollars at the most.
A year?
Yeah, if that much.
Now, what about the shared sick leave, sick leave pool? That's, that's a net zero because...
That's unknown because I really, I wouldn't want to guess how many people are gonna actually donate. I know people say they're gonna donate, but when it comes right down to it, I don't know.
I imagine that's when the tragedies and different things happen, that the donations really happen.
Well, sick leave from the standpoint of, from the standpoint of liability, I'm talking about city liability.
Well, if you allow them to donate, what you could get is what you would have paid out at maybe a higher rate. If someone, if they're donating to someone who's using it at a lower rate. That historically has been something that's been of value to, to cities, depending on who's using the leave.
Totally get it and I understand that. My, my question really comes down to the standpoint of liability, you know, counting on the books.
Depending on, right.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a pool, that pool of ours is one that has a dollar amount associated with it.
Which is minimal.
Used, there's liability there, correct?
Let me, let me see if I can clarify what you're saying. So, right now in our financials, what you're saying, and you're right, is that we report a liability for leave time. And if you put it in a pool, the liability didn't change.
Yes, correct.
So, as far as if there are savings or not a savings, I'm not sure if you asked that question. I just said, this doesn't really have anything to do with it because it's already recorded once anyway.
It's a net zero impact.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
Yep, that's my thought, but I just wanted to...
Just end up paying it out at, at less, I mean...
Yeah. You may end up paying more hours from that same...
Right, it could go either way.
Correct. All right. Personally, I've seen this before and I think it, it works, but any other thoughts?
I got a question. So when this, not on this decision point page, but on the other page, it said twelve months consecutively of employment. And this one just says after at least one year of service. Is there a reason for the consecutive or non-consecutive?
Uh, well, we want, we want to make sure somebody has been here at least one year is what it'll say in the policy is that they'll need to be here, uh, twelve months consecutively, not, you know, three months, six years ago and now they've been here nine months and they're leaving again. So, uh, they have to be here a year to be eligible to get the twenty percent sick leave when they leave.
Just an incentive to stay a year?
Right. Well, I mean, we don't, yeah, it is an incentive and it's a reward that you stayed at least a year. We don't want somebody to, even though it wouldn't be very much on the accrual part of it, uh, it's just the idea of paying somebody twenty percent of something if they've only been here six months.
Correct.
I mean, what...
Well, I was just thinking if somebody was here for three months in the summer and then they were back three months the next year, when they left, they don't have any sick leave anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
Now, that, something like that would be our temporary employees who don't accrue sick leave.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes, Lee?
Um, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Currently, currently we pay sick leave at a hundred percent?
At zero.
Zero.
Well, when they leave...
There is no...
They don't get anything when they leave.
They get nothing for this.
Right.
They forfeit it.
Vacations paid at a hundred percent, but that's...
Well, we don't have a lot of forfeiting, we're watching the use and we're getting, we have use.
So, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that I understand, what's the goal of, of this?
The, the goal is, hopefully, is to reduce the use of sick leave, which we, we are currently tracking and we, we will continue to track. Uh, and then as a, as a additional reward for people, um, for staying here.
This, this is, a lot of private companies have ESL banks, this is very similar to this. So, basically...
That would go with PTO if we had PTO.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask is, are we moving towards PTO? Because if, if your, the goal is to, you're still gonna get this paid one day, right, if you stick around and you don't get fired. So, it's a deferred cost, but eventually you're gonna pay it out. So...
Well, my, uh, PT, we did look at PTO and there's only a couple of cities, at least in this area, that have PTO. Uh, and the cost would be substantially more because, uh, you're, you're generally, built-in PTO is time for, uh, some sick leave, like maybe the first twenty-four hours is built in the PTO. So if somebody doesn't use sick leave, then you're, when they leave, you're gonna pay them those additional hours as part of their PTO. So there, it's definitely an increase in cost.
And that's precisely why they separate ESL from PTO.
Correct.
Because of that issue right there.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it's a benefit to the city as well. I think it encourages, like you said, encourages people to not...
Not to use, I mean, if, if you're sick and have a hundred and two fever, then we want you to stay at home. But, you know, if you wake up with a headache and that's it, come on in.
All right. I'm watching some department heads over here. Okay, um, so number two? Number two?
Yeah, number two.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
So on this one, let me get, let me ask this question real quick, just for the clarification for the folks here. Right now, exempt employees get four weeks resignation notice, period. Okay, but they can use their leave time. This will require management positions to give four weeks' notice. Those employees cannot use their sick time or their, their leave time. And an employee cannot use that as part of the two-week period, so they have to be there till the end.
You are correct.
So, okay, so that's, that's the distinction. Yes?
I have a question. Why would we not leave this to the, um, the managers, or that person's managers' discretion?
Well, I, I would prefer to be consistent throughout the city. I think when you're consistent on anything related to human resources, I think you reduce your liability and exposure to whatever. And so, uh, I think whatever we do, we need to be consistent.
Yep. And these management positions are specifically defined within our pay grade classifications as well as our departmental policies. So, again, it levels the playing field.
Uh, yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here, but, um, I know in, in my line of work, there's, there are, there are, um, instances where a person puts in their resignation and it's probably beneficial to go ahead and allow them to take their leave.
Well, it depends on the position.
It depends on the position, it depends on a lot of things, but...
Do we have a, a phrase or something in here already that says that once resignation notice has been received, that you aren't required to do your two weeks? It's up to the manager? So in other words, if we want you to go tomorrow, that's okay?
Uh, no, it does not include that.
Right now, they can use their leave time anytime they want.
I would think that...
Yeah, we can pay it out.
Because if you have a problem, child.
It just says they have to give notice.
We could have that.
The manager can make that decision and say that.
Correct. They can give the notice and we can determine...
What you could say in number two is that, you know, um, special circumstances may be evaluated on a case-by-case basis by the department manager.
That's what I was thinking.
Right.
Give some flexibility to the manager to be able to say...
We'll pay it out.
Yeah.
It, it would be beneficial to both parties if this person took his, his leave.
Right. And, and we can exercise that discretion.
Yeah, this doesn't...
Without, without having that.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Is there a reason we use four weeks instead of two weeks anyway?
Well, that's just for management.
Uh, for management, that's typical to use four weeks.
But exempt employees in our, in this organization are pretty much your...
Well, most of them are, are in management, but there, there are some that, that are not.
So if we're changing the management, management positions only, are we striking that all exempt employees are the four weeks? So, anyone else that's not a manager that is exempt has no requirement?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks.
All right. Two? Two? Okay, good.
With the, with an amendment?
With the amendment.
Yeah, with the clarification.
With the special circumstances amendment.
For all hours, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then the last one has to do with the reduction in force.
And again, I...
This is just to be consistent with the other, um, salary changes that were approved earlier.
Housekeeping.
Right.
Two? We've already approved the other one, so we should normally approve this.
Okay.
To get consistent, yep.
All righty, so now we have a... Alrighty, so now we have a resolution. Is that correct?
That's correct.
To approve the resolution.
Excuse me?
Yes, one last one, yes.
So, the one, the last item that I'd like to cover is currently, the city has a policy that speaks to the ICMA contribution. The policy currently, um, indicates that the city will pay one percent if the employees match one percent. However, the current policy exempts those covered by KPNF, which would be our police department, and the proposal would be to not exempt any employees. And so, anyone who's a city employee can participate for the one percent match.
So, I'm looking here. This is in the one eleven dot three dot three.
That is correct, page sixty-five.
Yep.
So, it would, so if you're looking at that page,
Yep.
Then the language it says, except those covered under the KPNF system, would be deleted. And the cost on that is minimal. We do not have a lot of employees that participate in the program, so the current cost is minimal.
So, we just strike, except those covered under the KPF system?
That is correct.
Yes.
Alright.
So, if you could add that as.
No problem with that.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So, with that, I will.
We gotta bring this back completed and ready to look at again?
Well, yes.
If you approve it, we will make these changes, and you will have a completed document that's ready to go, and we will be talking about it with the employees at our, um, employee quarterly meeting.
Yep. So, we will, we can have them give us a copy of the.
We'll give you a copy of the ones that's completed. They'll be incorporated with your approval tonight.
Alright, so on that note, we will entertain a motion on new business item number four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion winner, second more, that we adopt resolution number nineteen eighty-one revising multiple sections of the City of Gardner, Personnel Policy Manual two thousand and ten edition as amended by council. Uh, city clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Melton?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilman Winters?
Yes.
Councilman Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilman Grigorsik?
Yes.
Resolution one nine eight one passes.
Thank, thank you very much. This will be a great support to our employees, so thank you.
Good work. Appreciate it. New business item number five, consider adopting resolutions supporting Belmont Development Company LLC application for low-income housing tax credits to construct sixty-one, two, and three-bedroom apartment units at Garden Walk of Gardner, authorizing the mayor to sign. Larry Powell?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, we do have a representative of Belmont Development Company LLC with us tonight, Greg Rotoval. He's the acquisitions manager, so if we have any questions, or if you desire a short verbal presentation, he's available here to give that for you. Basically, tonight, we've had a, received a letter of request, pardon me, from the Belmont Development Company LLC to create a new apartment complex to be located basically at the northwest intersection of North Moonlight and University Drive. Bank property is currently owned, excuse me, the property is currently owned by the Bank of Blue Valley, and is under contract to Belmont Development Company LLC. And they are in the process of applying for Kansas State Low-Income Housing Tax Credits, and the timeframe for that is very quick, and so they needed to get before you quickly in order to meet the state's timeframe for the, for the application. So, that application consists of a resolution of support from the city for that tax credit application. We've included for you a service letter from our utilities department, which indicates that we are capable of providing the services required for them to construct said facility. There's a resolution which basically is good till twelve thirty-one of twenty eighteen. We generally date these for approximately a year. Um, it can be extended if they need to be by the, by the council at that point in time, and then we have a map showing the location of that particular property. And with that, I would defer any questions you have to Greg, the acquisitions manager, who is here for you. Uh, one point of reference for you, we do currently have one existing housing tax credit, low-income housing project. That's the expansion of Bethel Estates, which was supported by this council, or by the city, in a council resolution in twenty sixteen, and then those tax credits were awarded in twenty seventeen. And again, these will be awarded later. Um, I can't remember if it's late this year or next quarter, so, or next quarter twenty nineteen, first quarter twenty nineteen.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Second, do we have any, uh, from the public who would like to comment on new business item number five? Questions, comments from the dais?
I'd just like to start out by apologizing and making you wait through all their stuff, so.
I was just getting in the groove of UN Resources.
Right, that's. So, but I, I'm excited. I know this is one of those things we need here at Gardner, so.
Well, you know, it's one of those things, uh, you know, it's like Larry said, I'm Greg Rotoval, and I'm the acquisitions manager for Belmont. Uh, we're, uh, a vertically integrated company. We do our own property management. Uh, we do our own development, our own compliance. Uh, we've got approximately six thousand apartment units in nine states, so we're a pretty big developer. Uh, we believe in, in the value of mixed income development, so while we will be applying for the affordable housing credits, uh, this development that we're calling Garden Walk of Gardner, uh, I wanted, you know, Garden Walk at Moonlight, but nobody saw the Woody Allen sort of connection there. But, uh, so I was out, outvoted, but, uh, we view mixed income developments as important in every community, you know, so we don't lump, for lack of a better word, the lower-income individuals and families. Uh, you know, it's always our intention to co-mingle, for lack of a better word, the income groups. So, of the sixty units that we're proposing here, it's, uh, twelve one-bedroom units, thirty-two bedroom, you know, units, and eighteen three-bedroom units that make up the sixty total units. Uh, of those, twenty-five percent will be at market rate, and we'll have no income restrictions on those units whatsoever. So, we can build in that diversity, if you will, uh, across the economic strata. And just to give you a, just a, just a quick update, if you will, for lack of a better phrase, uh, I'm born and raised in the state of Missouri. Uh, you know, I hope you don't hold that against me, but, uh, I know a lot of folks here, KU fans. I've been in Oklahoma for about twelve, twelve years now. And I won't mention that the Sooners and the Cowboys beat the Jayhawks this year in basketball, but.
We haven't voted yet, I'm just saying.
There goes my resolution, doesn't it? I never know when to shut up, but, uh, you know, I've traveled I-35 extensively through the years, uh, and I've always been impressed with the growth that is coming down I-35. And every project that we develop, we commission an independent third-party market study as part of our due diligence. Uh, for obvious reasons, we don't do those in-house because we'll end up telling ourselves what we think we want to hear. Uh, based on the third-party market study that we just had commissioned here, just so you guys can have an understanding of the great job you're doing as a city and the growth that you're seeing, seeing here. Uh, based on the unit mix that I just mentioned, the total units of sixty units, uh, we have a capture rate which is critical for me. You know, that's something that I look at in the market study. An overall capture rate of six point one percent, which basically tells me as a developer, of all the available renter households that are in the primary area, I only have to capture six point two percent of those to reach stabilized occupancy. Uh, so there's a huge demand. Uh, the market study also indicated in this area, in our primary market area, there's over fifteen hundred and thirty-nine rental units with a vacancy rate of one point four percent. Uh, so it's an extremely strong market here, which is what led me here to begin with. Uh, the market study just backed up, if you will, what I thought I would find, so. Uh, just want to thank you all for allowing us to be here this evening, and, uh, I won't hold the human resources against you, as I don't get home tonight till about one-thirty now. But, uh, if there's any questions that I can help answer, uh, I'll be glad to do so.
Thank you.
Any, anyone have questions? I did have one question.
Sure.
And that has to do with the, uh, you said that of the sixty units that we have coming to town, uh, twenty-five percent of those will be market rate, which means that seventy-five percent by nature would be.
Affordable. Of the sixty total units, a minimum of those, which, if you do the math, I believe comes out to fifteen units.
About fifteen, yep.
Uh, will be set at market rate. The other forty-five units will be income restricted, if you will.
Yes.
Uh, across the, the median income, if you will. It's called the area median income. Uh, here in Gardner, it, of course, that's based on the Johnson County, Kansas median income, which, uh, as you guys are aware.
It's point of reference, yeah.
It's one of the, you know, it's one of the richest counties in the United States per capita income.
Sure.
So, we're not dealing with extremely low rents. Uh, when we utilize affordable housing credits, there's no other rental assistance, if you will. This is not like Section Eight housing. Uh, the rents are, for lack of a better phrase, artificially low due to the nature of the affordable housing credits. We're able to take those credits to, in, to syndicate those through investment companies to raise equity to bring to the deal. In return for that amount of equity that we bring to the deal, we're able to, to get those rents artificially lower, if you will. But the area median income for Johnson County, uh, is pretty significant, so it's not like we're looking at extremely low rents. The rents range, uh, from the lowest of the one-bedrooms to the highest of the threes, a range of five twenty-five per month to nine seventy-five per month. So, it's not like it's. And the, the rent is what it is. You have to be able to afford to pay the rent. There is no other subsidy, if you will, that, you know, that steps, steps in, uh, you know, to pay the rent on those units. And just to give you just a quick heads up, the square footage, uh, on the units right now is the one-bedrooms are six hundred and eighty-six square feet, the two-bedrooms are nine-ten, and the three-bedroom units are about eleven hundred square feet. Uh, the two- and three-bedroom units have two complete baths. The one-bedroom units just have one, one bath. But, uh, you know, we believe, and the market study indicated that as well, that, you know, we've put together a pretty good design here, I think, so.
Thank you for answering that. I, I think that was something that the public was probably going to have some concerns about.
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
I'm going to get a lot of questions on this already, so I'll just go ahead and ask. When are we breaking ground, and when's the grand opening on?
Because there's a lot.
I'm going to get hammered with that question.
How that goes.
There's a high demand.
In a perfect world, uh, well, I'll put it to you this way. This last round, uh, the state of Kansas has one application cycle per year for the affordable credits. Uh, I received funding, uh, for a project in Kansas City, Kansas. I'm currently developing thirty single-family homes that are in what we call like a lease purchase. It's like a lease-to-own. Uh, we just submitted the preliminary plat and should be closing the construction loan on that one within the next sixty days or so. So, uh, we were awarded funding of that one last, did you do August, September? And so, about six months down the road, we've got all the environmental and all the preliminary plats and the final plats and all that sort of stuff. All that unsexy stuff that you have to do before you can actually, uh, you know, start, start to move dirt. So, this case, uh, we would find out late August, early September. The timing would be similar. Uh, you know, we would start immediately with the surveys and the engineering, uh, all that stuff, of course, uh, in concert, you know, with the appropriate city departments here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the location, too. I mean, I think it fills in nicely in that particular location.
It's right across the street from the Justice Center.
Yes, it is.
For the Justice Center, yes. So, alright, um, is there any other questions, comments, thoughts? Alright, um, then we'll move on to a, a motion. Does anyone like to make a motion on?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Gregorsec, second Melton, that we adopt resolution number nineteen eighty-two supporting Belmont Development Company LLC's application for low-income housing tax credits to construct sixty-one, two, and three-bedroom apartment units at Garden Walk of Gardner, and authorize the mayor to sign. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilman Winters?
Yes.
Councilman Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilman Gregorsec?
Yes.
Councilman Melton?
Yes.
New business item number five passes with a pregnant pause. Alright, new business item, thank you. New business item number six, consider adopting an ordinance vacating a portion of the public street located in the northwest corner of Section Twenty-Five, Township fourteen, south range twenty-two east, in the city of Gardner, Johnson County, Kansas. Mr. Kramer?
Evening again. Uh, so, item six and seven, uh, go together, and, and, and basically what we're doing is going back and the old Kane Street right-of-way uh, that we don't need for the new Kane Street alignment, just, uh, east of Center Street. Uh, we're vacating that right-of-way with item number six. And then with item number seven, we're, we're moving those properties to where they need to be. And so, item number seven then follows up with, uh, a drainage easement that we need uh, for the Kane Street project, dedicates the right-of-way for the Kane Street project, and then takes the two parcels, moves one to the north to, to the existing owner, and then one further to the south to the existing owner. So, item number six begins the process with vacating that portion of the old right-of-way that we, that we no longer need because there's not a road there anymore.
Anything else?
Questions?
Okay. Um, any public comment on new business item number six? We have to take these individually, by the way. With no one coming forward, questions on, um, new business item number six?
Uh, so, there will not be any surprise, uh, fees or anything associated later, or?
Replotting?
No, no, the only.
Excise tax or anything of those kinds?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Oh, gosh.
Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion on, uh, new business item number six, the ordinance number two six six six.
So moved. Second.
Motion Moore, second Melton, that we adopt ordinance number two six six six. An ordinance vacating a portion of the public street located at the northwest corner, Section Twenty-Five Township fourteen, south range twenty-two east, in the city of Gardner, Johnson County, Kansas. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Winters?
Yes.
Councilman Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilman Gregorsec?
Yes.
Councilman Melton?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance two six 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 passes. New business item number seven, we have any further comments?
Yeah, yeah, the only other comment I did want to make is that all of these actions were planned as part of the project from the beginning. It's just, you, you want to build your new street and have it open and ready before you vacate the old one because you're still using it, so.
Public comments on new business item number seven? Speak now. Alright, with no one coming forward, any additional discussion from any of the members of the council? Uh, quick claim deed is for zero dollars?
It might say a dollar, but it's zero dollars, yes.
And then, the, obviously, the easement is going to be part of that.
Yes. And so, so actually, the, the easement, if, if you're looking in the order, the easement comes before we give the property away.
Correct.
Yes.
Alright, um, I have a motion on new business item number seven.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Moore, that we, I'm not going to read this whole thing. Authorize the city administrator to execute the following documents related to the Center Street reconstruction project, Kane Street I-35 and Kane Street realignment project. A quick claim deed to transfer ownership of city property to Robert Cook. Quick claim deed to transfer ownership of city property to Brenda Rodriguez. The right-of-way dedication for the realigned section of Kane Street and the permanent drainage easement dedication for the storm sewer constructed as part of the Center Street reconstruction, Kane Street I-35, and Kane Street realignment project. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Any extensions? New business item number seven passes. Business item number eight, consider a resolution establishing poll attachment and related fees for the use of the city of Gardner's streetlight poles. Michael Kramer, you're back for round four.
Didn't even have to go anywhere. Um, so, yeah, the new business item number eight, what it allows us to do is, um, rent our, uh, streetlight poles for a fee, and establishes those fees. Um, one thing about those fees is they, they do need to be fair and consistent with other municipalities and not, um, not showing any prejudice, uh, in accordance with. and not, um, not show any prejudice, uh, in accordance with the Telecommunications Act, um, which is probably referred to by many different names and, but, uh, but it will allow us to charge a fee for renting the, our streetlight poles.
Great. Um, all right, if there's no other comments from presenter, I will open up the floor for public comment. Is anyone who wishes to make comment on new business item number eight? Hearing no comment, questions or comments from the council, starting with, on the left, right?
Your left?
Yes, my left, your right, yes.
Um, I had a bunch of questions, but they were all answered prior to the meeting, uh, and I really appreciate that.
Okay, great.
I, the only ones I had, too, was the, um, the picture of what it was gonna look like. I don't know if we have that, we can show. Yeah, I know, but I'm just, for, for the public, if we can put it on the screen to see, so they can, I don't have it.
I, I have a copy.
Okay.
Do you, do you want to show?
Just so the public can see what, what we're getting into here.
Were we not able to pull them?
No, I don't have those on, on the drive.
Okay, that's, that's fine, but right now we cannot have a vote because we don't have a warrant, so. Okay.
I won't.
No water time. Now we have a warrant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, I'm good. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Is there a possibility we could have this as part of the public record and not have to?
I'm just borrowing the email we sent to Councilmember Melton, which has the pictures attached.
Yeah.
I think we have it here.
Okay. This might just be one of those situations where we might have to just, you know, insert it in the public, in the public record.
I can show a photo, but it won't go out of the video.
Understood.
I'm getting ready to right now. There you go. It's really me. Okay, it's sent. If it doesn't work, it's ungraded.
No, 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 guys. All right.
It's all right, we can just put it in the file and-
Yeah, I think it might just be better than insert that in public record. That way the public can see these pictures. Oh.
Yay.
There we go, all right.
Probably the second page of that is a better example.
So that device there is a, we're putting on?
Yeah, and so, so there's some restrictions on how tall that can be.
Yeah.
Um, and how big around, and that's a, a typical installation. Most folks, you don't, you don't even notice them.
Looks like a repeater unit.
And, and then there's some, you know, different radio and electrical attachments to the pole at times, too.
Okay.
Is, is this a high-voltage unit? I mean, do we have to worry about kids swinging on it and electrocuting themselves or anything?
Yeah.
I don't think that's the case.
Good, I'm just making sure. This is the time to ask.
Yeah.
Is that a separate electric meter I see there?
Yeah, and, and so for each installation, uh, some of them, uh, may be billed just a standard rate, and that just has to be worked out with our utility department, and some of them will have their own separate individual meter.
Okay.
So it'll really be up to how our utility department wants to move forward with it.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, my only question-
Thank you, Amy.
Oh, I'm sorry, go on.
I just said, thank you, Amy, that's all.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Amy. Um, my, my, my last question on this one is, you know, we're, we're looking at potentially doing some, some, uh, streetlight mod, changes in the future, has to do with, you know, downtown improvement program. Is this going to require another vote at some point to, to require us to, whenever we switch out these poles? Is that gonna require a separate vote, or is that going to just carry?
I can't imagine that we would need to do another vote unless you can see a legal reason. We can just carry this on whatever, you're gonna change the-
If, if this- When you change the light poles, it's not gonna require-
You just carry it on.
No.
You just carry it on.
Yeah.
Right, you just carry it on.
And that's what I thought, but, but I wanted to make sure of that. Okay, great. All right, um, I'm gonna entertain a motion on new business item number eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Gregorsik, that we, uh, adopt Resolution Number nineteen eighty-three. A resolution establishing poll attachment and related fees for the use of city of Gardner's streetlight poles to be effective immediately upon adoption and approval. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilman Gregorsik?
Yes.
Councilman Melton?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilman Winters?
Yes.
Resolution Number nineteen eighty-three passes. New business item number nine, consider authorizing the mayor to execute a master license agreement for attachment of wireless communications facilities to the city facilities with Mobility LLC. Michael?
Yeah. So basically, what we've got now in place, we have our, our new and updated right-of-way ordinance that took place last year. Uh, we have our, our fee and poll, poll attachment fees. Uh, we also updated our land development code to be able to, to be consistent in applying this. And we have our franchise agreement with our first franchisee in this, and that's Mobility. And so the franchise agreement, uh, and all those other things, so the right-of-way ordinance, the fees, everything, they all work together. Um, and then this is the last piece of that, and that's the master license agreement. And basically what it does is establishes how they will go about, um, you know, making their applications, making the poll ready for putting their equipment on it. Um, and essentially allows us to either have them, when they make the application, include all of that documentation that we need, or pay us to do the work, um, that we would need. Um, so it really sets out those guidelines and, and also, uh, um, you know, handles, you know, the, the liability that goes along with it. And Ryan, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or? Okay.
Okay. Public comments on new business item number nine? No one coming forward, any questions? Thoughts?
So on the franchise agreement, Mike, and thanks so much for you and Amy answering all my other questions. Um, one question that I didn't ask that just occurred to me is, as the city grows, and we are such a wireless community, will we have new franchise agreements with other competitor or other offerings of like type?
Yeah, so we believe that there will be additional companies come in that want to do the same type of thing. Uh, again, uh, you know, you have to be neutral when you're, when you're looking at them, so we're gonna end up treating them all the same. And we see this master license agreement as, you know, setting the standard for the next guy.
So when you say standard, from a process perspective or from a cost perspective, or both?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so, these attachments, currently, there's no plans to connect to the city's electrical grid, correct?
Correct. Now, with, with that being said, I mean, they, they'll need electrical power, so they will either need their own electric meter, or, um, i-if Gons wants to allow them, he can just tap into the existing electric, assuming it's always on, and, and charge them a flat rate, or have them have their own meter and keep it separate.
Gons, will you speak to that since, you know, if this is the, the standard going forth, and we're gonna have our rate study back here in a month, what are your thoughts on how we want to proceed with this in the meantime? Flat fee, or?
There's a little wattage, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, it, we're not talking about a lot, but I'm just thinking you could have a lot of these and-
Yeah, there's a lot of them out.
The original approach was to charge a flat fee based on the power consumption of the electronics.
Okay.
So if it's, uh, forty watt, four-hundred watt, will determine the appropriate rate.
Okay, and what, what category are we gonna stick that rate in? Just commercial?
Well, right now, we have, um, we have, for example, we have streetlights that they fall under residential or commercial. In this case, I will put them with commercial.
Okay.
Good question.
All right, any other questions? All right. I have an, I entertain a motion on new business item number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Winters, that we authorize the mayor to execute a master license agreement for attachment of wireless communications facilities to city facilities between the city of Gardner, Kansas and Mobility LLC. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Any extensions? New business item number nine passes. New business item number ten, consider initiation of a new planned zoning district. Mr. Powell, you are the last but not least.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a quick recap for the general public. We, uh, the council had a study session meeting, uh, last Monday night, and in that study session meeting, you went through a, uh, exercise in which you reviewed future plan use for, uh, growing across I-35. And as part of that discussion at that point in time, we talked about the kinds of growth that you would see and the types of business and the mixtures of business, industry, residential, et cetera, that could go on within a, within, uh, the east side of the, uh, I-35 area, and how that interrelated with the existing city. And so the concept was to look at something that we don't currently have within our current zoning, which is an activity zone or an interchange zone or something yet to be named, to be reviewed as either a standalone zone or an addition to our existing zoning propositions or existing zoning uses, and/or maybe an overlay districts. There are several ways you can manage this. So, the best way to get that done, though, is to have the planning commission review and study that out, and then bring a recommendation back to you. So this is a request, uh, from staff to the city council to implement a change request or a review request in zoning for the creation, or at least the review, and bringing back to you a recommendation for a creation of this type of zoning within the land use code.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Any public comments on new business item number ten? With no one coming forward, questions from the council?
Yeah, I have one. So with respects to the recommendation, which I support, that's not specific to south of one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth and east of I-35, correct? So we could do an overlay as an example with the land that's south of the railroad tracks and north of Grand Star, or some sort of other large infill property in the city.
Well, the, the concept, as we were discussing, and I believe at that meeting, as I understood it, was we were more concerned with the area directly around the three possible interchanges. If you're, if you're, we currently have, on the books, uh, mixed-use districts which were brought into being in the last year, which I think address what you're talking about within the city itself and along the city corridor. And then there are some overlay concepts that we're talking about implementing when we get through with the PSP grant and bring to you in, in, uh, March, the results of the, uh, study for the downtown corridor study. There will be some recommendations in that that I think will cover the aspect which you're referring to. This is more directly involving just the interchange areas.
Okay.
Regional, commercial, and light.
So I remember the conversation, I just had that thereafter.
And the, the, the two planning tools are not mutually exclusive. You can have planned districts as well as overlay districts.
Okay. Questions? Anything else? All right, thanks, Larry. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion on new business item number two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Gregorsik, second Melton, that we direct a planning commission to consider the creation of a new interchange or activity zone for the properties located around the I-35 interchanges. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? New business item ten passes. That's all of new business. Let's move on to council updates. I'll start around the end of the horseshoe here. Chief, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Finance Director Gurley?
Yes, sir.
Legal?
Yes, sir.
Gons?
Sir, last year, the city council approved a recommendation from the UAC to, uh, purchase a computerized maintenance management system. Uh, the city went with Lucity. Uh, we spent most of twenty-seventeen putting the information in the system, so the system went live February first. So right now, five divisions are using Lucity.
That's awesome.
That's all.
Thank you. Um, Larry?
Uh, again, we'd just like to remind you that the, uh, the downtown corridor grant will be completed soon, and the results of that will be coming back to you. Uh, there will be an opportunity to, uh, take that information and, uh, consider it and then do some cross-reference implementation, uh, with the CIP and the CIA program that is currently in existence, and there'll be a list of recommendations within that, that you could certainly, uh, take, take under advisement to implement as quickly as possible, uh, as the opportunity arrives. Um, the cold has basically slowed down the Hampton Inn project for right now, but you may have seen a second tower going up. That is a second elevator shaft that was, it's the other end of the building. Uh, in case you were curious as to what that particular item was. The, um, scooters have started at the other end of the scale, a four-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot facility for a drive-through coffee shop only. So there are people that will be interested in that, though, and want to know what that's going on at the old Waffle House location. And then we have, uh, CVS that's quickly moving towards being opened in the near future. Um, and the Center Street improvements, we hope, will be completed sometime soon. I can't think of-
Being one of the busiest people in town, you know, it's a tough job, right? Uh, Public Works Director Kramer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll start with, oh, and Cheryl, do you have anything for us?
Yes, so at the last council meeting, um, the mayor and I were tasked with meeting with the property owner for the Fairfield, um, site, where the utility advisory committee and staff have been working to try to get an easement. We did conduct that meeting and talked about some things with them, about trying to see how we might be able to move forward. And, um, hopefully we'll have an update here within the next sixty days on that. So I wanted to let you all know we- So I wanted to let you all know we convened that meeting. And then Wednesday night I had an opportunity to move between two very key meetings, the chamber retreat for a little bit and the Main Street corridor plan. And both were very good, very well attended, and there are some good things that are going to be coming forward to you in the course of the next month.
I saw the draft is like this. Hope a lot of good reading, insomnia cure, you know, that kind of thing. But it's actually really good information. All right, I'll start on my right this time, far left of the dais, that's Mr. Baldwin.
So first, congratulations to Parks and Rec and all of the staff on the award. The award's nice, but the fact that the residents so well attended it and enjoyed it is the true testament, so congrats to everybody. I'd like to thank the council members for indulging me on forcing you to a work session for the first, you know, meeting of the year.
We won't hold against you this time.
You get one. I get one, right?
Larry, I, I just want to check and see if you got a chance to look at that excise tax disclosure thought that I threw out there. I'll, I'll share with the council real quick. I, after the issue with the American Legion, I chatted with Larry and just had a suggestion that if the city transferred property, we'd have a disclosure that says that there will be a future excise tax so that we have a paper trail. So I just want to check and see if we've even had a chance to look at it.
Yes, sir, we, we have reviewed that. This specifically pertains to the process of where the city is selling a property, or is involved in the transfer of a property. And so what we, what we've done is we've put into our internal policy of our planning and codes enforcement division, the fact that any time that we're going through the precondition meeting process with a client, that that's a checkoff item. So that is discussed as to whether or not there's any excise tax due, and if so, when it's due, and when it would be payable. We really don't transfer city property that often, so we don't expect it to come up very often. But that way we have a checkoff list, and that item is now included in that list.
Right, wonderful, thank you.
My only other question is, we received the email from the city clerk with all of the boards and commissions' positions, and we've got, you know, the week to review it, but then we'll have to get on the interview, so are we forming an interview team tonight, or how's that working?
That's a, thank you for, for bringing that up. So we are ready for interviews, right, for our boards and commissions?
Yes, starting next week.
Correct, and so we've got four separate boards that we're going to have to have interviews for.
We have five.
Five, five boards, yes. I'm going to start, I'm going to start with the, the planning commission, because that's the highest priority right now. I'd like to receive some volunteers. I would like, if possible, for there to be only one member of leadership on my given committee.
We can't, because you'd be one.
No, I'm not, well, I'm talking about council leadership, council leadership, not, not the mayor. Mayor's going to be involved with all of these.
Mr. Mayor, per, per the, the governing body rules of procedure, I'm pretty sure we have to have two of us.
That's correct. What I'm saying is that the two members in interview team, one of them, both of them shouldn't be...
As president and vice.
President, vice president, yes. I just think that would be easier for people to have more options and opportunities to, to be a part of the process.
Okay, I'd start on, to work on the planning one, so...
I'd love to do the planning one, too.
All right, so we got Councilman Winters and Council Vice President Milton for planning commission, so we can start working on calendars there. BZA? Can we jump up at once?
Yeah, right. Do Todd and I have to volunteer for that one, too?
I can already tell you I'll volunteer for the UAC.
Yeah, and I'll do the EDC.
So, we're not there yet, guys.
Just giving a heads up.
Yes, yes.
Just as a, a point of reference and to Mr. Milton's, Councilman Milton's statement, both planning commission and BZA are under my department, so it would be best if they could be handled somewhat together.
By both? By the same ones, okay, so...
I like it. Luckily I'm here.
And I would, don't know what your policy's going to be about who attends the interviews, but if at all possible, because the planning commission and BZA have state requirements...
Yes.
If I could have my chief planner or my principal planner in attendance to answer any questions you might have, that...
We do have a policy that talks about this, the staff participation and the administrator.
All right, so we'll go ahead and keep the two, the same two members of the interview team for the BZA and planning commission, so you guys have now two sets of candidates to interview. All right. EDC, I heard Mr. Gregorsik won. Who would like to join Randy on that, those interviews?
So, you don't interview for the EDC, it's a citizen advisory committee.
Oh, it's a citizen, yeah, you're correct, we don't have to interview those. So the next one would be, the UAC. So yes, Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Gregorsik will be on that.
I'd like to acknowledge that.
Yep. And then the last one is Airport, Airport Board, yes.
I know a guy who's calling for that.
All right, Leave, Council President Moore and...
There's got to be another non...
I'll do it.
And, all right, Councilman Baldwin. All right, excellent, and any other...
You still have the Board of Building Code Appeals that hasn't actually been formed yet, but you do have a head of members, so let's try it.
Okay.
It may be possible to form that.
Great, so that's the BBC...
And that's another Business and Economic Development Committee, so maybe, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
Council Vice President Milton and Councilman Gregorsik on that one. All right, do we have marching orders?
Hopefully we can get all those schedules scheduled.
Yeah, that's going to be a fun, that's going to be a fun task. Yes.
I got two questions there.
Yes.
One, because we're doing all this in concert, are we going to select our top one or two, or depending on however many seats there are? Because there are people that apply to multiple boards, so if one group says, "I want them," it'd be good not to repeat this process.
This is, this is where the governing body rules of procedure kind of take hold. We do have a stipulation with the interview team where there has to be unanimous agreement on a candidate, and that candidate then become, is the one that's pushed forward. Now, if we have a situation where the same candidate is being pushed forward by multiple interview teams, then it's up to, basically it would be the city clerk's responsibility to let those two interview teams know that we've got a single candidate that's being brought forward for two different positions.
Is that where there was a better call?
Exactly. So that's how we would manage that.
Okay.
Yes.
The other question is, and the city clerk already passed on to me that we'll be getting the information as to how many seats and, you know, who's expiring this year that could come up here during this process, and et cetera. Is there any thought to making these groups more similar as far as size? Or some of them have chairman, some of them don't?
If you're talking about the citizen advisory committees, it's...
No, also the boards.
Yeah, the boards, the boards and commissions are what we're discussing right now.
Right, they, they both have variances as to size, and if there's a chairman, if there's not, et cetera.
Well, some of them are statute...
Is that done by statute?
Some are statute requirements, like, for example, the planning commission is a statute requirement. So is the BZA. So that, the number and composition of those members are enshrined.
Right.
So we really don't know. I don't know if we want to conform every, all of, of all of our other boards and commissions to the size and makeup of those committees.
Well, I just know, like, UAC's a five-member board.
Yep.
Building codes, I believe, is going to be five members. So, you know, Airport...
Five members.
Is, is going to be five, right?
Yep. So they're already, with the exception of planning commission, which is seven, I was thinking it was only four.
Seven.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, that, and then the Board of Judiciary Appeals is five, correct? So other than the planning commission, we're pretty much the five, the rest of the boards and commissions. Anything else? Okay, I think we've got consensus then on the interview teams, and we'll move forward. Anything other than that?
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Gregorsik.
I wanted to talk about the chamber retreat and the chamber board meeting, so that was over the course of two days. The retreat, I believe, was from, oh my goodness, in the evening for a couple of two, three hours. And then the board meeting was from 8:30 to about 1:00, 1:30, and I attended both of those for their entirety. I was real happy to see Cheryl and the mayor attend. I think that, that the direction came from some just phenomenal professional coaching. I think it really helped that group of business leaders and chamber ambassadors, et cetera, to really focus on a broader goal through some really cool strategies and exercises. But I would encourage all our elected officials to be open-minded as that starts dripping down, if you will. I think the chamber has a lot of exciting things around the corner. I think they hold more leverage than we might give them credit for. And they are a conduit to, or a conduit to Edgerton. And I think there's some great partnership opportunities through the chamber on the city's behalf. So I just, I encourage and, and our elected officials just to be open-minded as that stuff starts rolling out, because I think there's some real positives that can come from that. Outside of that, I just appreciate the pre-meeting Q and A from staff. It just, in my mind, it just made things run a lot smoother, so thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Mr. Winters?
I just want to circle back real quick on Councilman Baldwin's recommendation about the excise tax and notification. So when you check it off, I said, should that include some kind of a written document or something with, with any fees, or any? I just worry, there's not that many I know, but I just worry it's one of those things where, oh, well, yeah, I told him, and then he says, "I don't," you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Haven't, I've just seen some other things like that happen, where we didn't have a paper trail, and it would have been helpful.
We, we can more, we'll make it more formalized than just a checkoff.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Council Vice President Milton?
I have nothing, except for, you know, it's going to be ugly tomorrow, maybe, so be careful.
You think it's a resolution?
Huh?
You think it's a resolution?
All right. Council President Moore?
I'd just like to also congratulate Public Works, or the Parks and Rec Department for their recent recognition, so congratulations on that. And also thank you to the staff for the personnel policy update presentation. It was particularly helpful to have the highlighted argument points or the, and the things that we're actually changing in there. It was really very helpful, so that's all I have.
Appreciate that. Well, I don't have a lot. I wanted to mention that the feedback that we got from folks regarding the, the work session slash interactive presentation was, was very positive. We also got some very good feedback from the Main Street corridor plan. And the, I saw the draft presentation, and it was, it's very high-quality, very, very professional. The folks at Confluence did a tremendous job in pulling that together, and I want to provide some kudos to that. I was happy enough to host the, the city staff for our first Fridays with the mayor event. I know that Councilman Gregorsik made an appearance, and, and I think it went over really well with the staff, just trying to, you know, provide some, some support behind the scenes for the, for the work that the staff does and, and helping, you know, helping them to understand the value that, that the city council has placed in that from the standpoint of the job that they do, and, you know, give us something a little bit back. So I appreciate that opportunity. And State of the City's coming up next month, and we've got a lot of really great announcements coming out. I am going to start the hype train now for that, so I'm going to start bull not whistle, because it's going to be, it's going to be some, there's going to be some game-changing type of announcements coming out for that State of the City address, and I'm looking really forward to, to lighting the fire and capturing the imaginations of folks in this community. So, anyway, that's all I had. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Milton, second Moore, that we adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.